Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Moon. I use she/her pronouns and I'm a senior attorney with Education Law Center of Pennsylvania. Thank you so much for being here. We're really excited to talk with you all about this. This work that we think is critically important to make sure that all students have inclusive schools and access to an honest education. I appreciate you sharing moving through the slides for me. I'm ready for the first slide. So what we're going to cover here is. I'll tell you a little bit more about Education Law Center and provide a little context for how we got here with these issues presented. And then I'll give you some information about school board authority. Book bans, censorship of curriculum and discussion in classrooms. And exclusion and discrimination of gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and non-binary students. As we're seeing these issues presented in Pennsylvania, concerns that are brought to us by parents and community members in school districts across the state. Next slide. So just briefly, if you're not familiar with Education Law Center, we are a legal services nonprofit. Our mission is to ensure access to a quality public education for all children in Pennsylvania. We do have offices in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, but address issues across the state. And we focus on the most underserved students, some listed here with priority areas, including equal access to quality schools. Adequate and equitable school funding and dismantling the school to prison pipeline and addressing school climate. We have a helpline that information will be provided at the end of the presentation. That people can call with individual questions or concerns about a particular student. We do offer some legal advice and representation. And we also do policy advocacy at local, state, and federal levels and offer know your rights trainings and presentations like this. Next slide. So our vision, that kind of orientation that we bring to this work. Is that every child deserves an education that prepares them for success, provides a safe place for learning and honors their history and experiences. And schools should provide accurate information to our children to give them the freedom to pursue their dreams and prepare them to fully participate in our democracy and society. So you'll find this information again at the end of the presentation, but we have created a website, a webpage of resources. On our website with links to lots of, lots of additional detail about these issues. A little bit of context, and I will be doing this and injustice in a, in a quick timeframe. But we have seen some progress of corporations and education institutions acknowledging white privilege and systemic racism and committing to DEI trainings. And then also in May 2020, with the police murder of George Floyd, that brought more people and attention to issues of institutionalized racism across our culture and systems. And in reaction, we saw 2020 Trump executive order that required contracts to include a provision. That said, they will not have workplace training that inculcates its employees, any form of race or sex stereotyping or scapegoating. Or they'd face cancellation of contracts. And you know, this really looked against teaching sexist and racist realities in our culture. And then in President Biden's administration, he reversed that ban against CEI and other trainings. And issued pretty immediate statements in support of LGBTQ students and people's rights. And against discrimination. And, and we have seen since a backlash. In response, well-funded right-wing groups formed in opposition and fighting efforts to improve racial justice in public schools and instead trying to sow division. By accusing schools of teaching CRT, vilifying social and emotional learning and threatening teachers with lawsuits. For just acknowledging the existence of gay and transgender people in the classroom. We also saw attacks on critical race theory, which is a well-established academic framework addressing how racism is embedded in the US laws and institutions. And is not commonly taught in our grade schools and high schools. But some. Attempt at acknowledging the history and institutions is really, is really important for schools to take on. And banning CRT would really mean denying students truthful conversations about systemic racial discrimination. So we have also seen historic numbers of anti-LGBTQ bills in state legislatures, including some here in Pennsylvania that, that we'll mention. Next slide. So a brief. Primer on school boards, and I know there are other resources and trainings being offered by ed voters and others. That get into some of this and particular advocacy also. But school boards are policy-making bodies that are responsible for developing and revising policies that govern the actions of the board and school district employees. They provide the framework or guardrails for district activities and ensure school district actions comply with state and federal law. Their policy revisions have to go through a public review process. Generally includes review by committee and consideration at two separate board meetings. And the public has to have the opportunity to provide input on proposed policy changes. Boards do have to follow state and federal law, including non-discrimination law. And their policies must be clear and not vague to be enforceable. And board actions can also be challenged for being arbitrary and compresious, which has definitions in legalese, but generally can be thought of as being unreasonable. Pennsylvania School Code also requires that school boards establish and make available formal complaint procedures on their websites. So a little bit about book bans next. The definition offered here is that a book ban occurs when a school administrator or other personnel removes or restricts student access to a book that was previously available based on the content of that book. In Pennsylvania. I'm sorry, we have seen attempts to ban books rising nationally as well as in Pennsylvania. There have been 456 book bans in Pennsylvania, according to Penn America, which tracks this nationally. And in practice, what we see as the targets are. Quote sexual conduct or even implied depictions of sexual acts. Language some people find offensive or focus and usually it is a focus on a few incidents of certain words or. Specific passages that describe sensitive topics. And really what we have seen nationally in practice is that. Books are targeted for references to race and racism or books that focus on LGBTQ plus characters or themes. And these are some data provided from Penn America that among the 1,500 books that have been banned nationwide since July 21. Forty-one percent contain protagonists or secondary characters of color. Twenty-two percent address race and racism and thirty-three percent explicitly address gay and lesbian transgender themes or characters. So when we're talking about school board authority and limits regarding book bans, we really have to. Talk about them in two different groups. So. Pennsylvania, when we're looking at books assigned as part of the curriculum. In Pennsylvania, school boards have the power to remove books so long as they comply with federal and state law, including the First Amendment. And students do have a First Amendment right to read and receive information and school boards cannot target certain viewpoints to be discrim- prohibited. There is, I'll note, limited case law to guide this and cases that. Focus specifically on book banning are largely from the eighties, some again in ninety-five and early two thousands. There is new litigation. In Texas and Florida, for example, now, but no results on that yet. So here, Pennsylvania law gives school boards broad discretion over curricular decisions. They're responsible to adopt a course of study adapted to the age and development needs of peoples. This is of course usually delegated to superintendent who works with teachers and curriculum experts on the ground. They have the authority to select textbooks and curricular materials. There, as I said, is not a lot of case law, but earlier federal courts have affirmed the discretion of the school boards under the First Amendment. With a. Caveat that the discretion is broad but not limitless. So boards in this area may not impose an identifiable religious creed. Or otherwise impair permanently the student's ability to investigate matters that arise in the national course of intellectual inquiry. They can only remove curricular materials if it's reasonably related to legitimate pedagogical concern. About denying students access to potentially sensitive topics. When we look at book bans regarding library books, it is a slightly different matter. Pennsylvania school boards have less discretion in restricting non-curricular materials such as library books. And you also see like resource materials considered in this category as well. So the US Supreme Court and the landmark case on this issue have said that libraries have a unique role that's different from mandatory curricula. They must be a place to test or expand upon ideas that are presented in the classroom. And there's strong language that a board may not, consistent with the First Amendment, contract the spectrum of available knowledge by prescribing a narrow view of community values. And limiting the books available in a school library because it is really hinging on this fact that libraries. Checking books out of libraries is wholly optional. It is not something that students are required to do, that all students have exposure, must have exposure to the same material. And the First Amendment requires students always remain free to inquire and the school library is the locus of that freedom. And so there is additionally language direction that books can't be removed because the board or individuals dislike the ideas contained in them. Or in an effort to describe what must be orthodox in issues of politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion. And courts have rejected book removals on the basis that they are too concerned with racial matters and controversial. Or simply because they depict gay relationships or concern. That the books may promote disobedience or disrespect of authority. Those types of challenges have been rejected by courts. So when you're looking at challenging of book bans regarding the procedures, you want to consider whether the standard usual procedures have been followed. It is a red flag if procedures are rushed through. Or if there are not the usual multiple opportunities for public comments and revisions being returned to committee and then to a regular board meeting. Because courts also consider the context of proposed policies. And the motivation of policymakers to determine if animus toward a particular population or viewpoint is a motivating factor. Policies may be considered unlawful if they are impermissibly vague or overbroad. If they fail to consider a book in its entirety, including whether it's been cited for critical acclaim. That may be evidence that a policy is not tailored to be objective and instead. And that it's not identifying educational suitability, but instead seeking to enforce a particular viewpoint or exclude a particular viewpoint. And we have seen some proponents try to. Tap into this idea of pedagogical concern by focusing on quote-unquote sexually explicit language. And that is where often the terms are vague and overbroad. And can create a chilling effect because they offer no definition for a district sexualized contact or implied sexual content. In a, in a particular policy. And I think the. Language about sensitive issues is also vague here because it is unclear about sensitive to whom. What books are being targeted, what perspectives are being banned? And. A lot of these policies do not also recognize that schools also already have opt-out provisions for library materials. So that if a particular parent doesn't want students to be reading a particular book or type of book. They have procedures within every district to communicate with the librarian, to fill out the appropriate forms and. Limit the exposure of their child to the material. So policies that are. Seeking to act beyond a particular child are often overbroad in limiting the access of students whose parents do not have a problem with that material. Next slide. We also have seen some. Bills and policies regarding censorship of curriculum and classroom discussion. So on curriculum, as I've said, that. School boards do have the power to adopt and arrange courses of study for their schools. So this can include whether to fund a new robotics program or whether to approve a new African-American history class. The State Board of Education does set academic standards for each required subject area that's available on their website. And chapter four of. The Pennsylvania Code has core curriculum required for elementary levels and high school requirements for graduation. And there are model curricula online that everybody can see. And certainly the board has discretion. If matters are not specifically required by state academic standards. And so long as they are not violating this principle of, from the First Amendment, creating a pall of orthodoxy in the classroom. So a little more specifically. We have seen. Censorship of. In the form of banning decisive, I'm sorry, divisive concepts, which is not really defined. And concepts, instruction about CRT. Instruction or acknowledgement of gay and transgender people as well. So for example, HP 1532 in Pennsylvania sought to ban. Instruction that an individual by virtue of race or sex is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. And this really seeks to avoid critical discussions in school about history, about systems and power. Which handicaps our children for engagement in the real world. There are some also proposals to shift to opt-out policies. So state law requires, for example, that parents or guardians can opt children out of the HIV, the required HIV prevention education. There, to be clear, there's no sex ed requirement by state law or PDE. That's up to each district or board. But that, but policies that would seek to shift from an opt-out to an opt-in policy. And all districts do have policies about how parents can request their child be excused from a particular instruction. If that conflicts with their religious beliefs or principles of the people or the family. But to shift to opt-in puts a greater burden on the school and advance notice about material relating to. The rights of a particular population makes clear that the district thinks there is a reason that significant people may want to be excluded from critical thinking about those matters, which we believe is problematic. There are also bills and district policies in the form of don't say gay that restricts the instruction about sexual orientation or gender identity in schools. For example, SB 1278, and we've got materials on this matter as well. Effectively would forbid any acknowledgement of gay or transgender students or LGBTQ families until the sixth grade. And that's vague or overbroad and overbroad. There is no protection or unclear protection. With the contention that sexual orientation and gender identity are only ideas, ignoring that gay and transgender students are real people. And in doing so, the bill erases and dehumanizes children and their parents. We also see these. Educator advocacy quote-unquote bans. And these have related to religion, gender identity, social, political, and geopolitical matters, sexual orientation, sociopolitical. So for context, there has. Long been, I think, many policies in districts to prohibit political activity of teachers. And that's really, you know, teachers running for an office and not using material and space at the school for their political run. That is very different from. A vague prohibition on advocacy. Which dictates what teachers can say in the classroom about broad populations of people. It prohibits our teachers from accurately teaching history and bans anti-bias training and would make culturally relevant teaching nearly impossible. They really seek to intimidate teachers and prevent discussions of current events of American history. Conversations that students need to be prepared for adulthood and become informed critical thinkers. There's often in some of them also a vague mandate for balance and neutrality in all instruction, which would. Could also suggest overbroad requirements like a history teacher providing a Nazi's justification for the genocide of Jewish Americans. Or the KKK members' support for lynchings, which I don't think anybody thinks is appropriate. And instruction that devalues human beings based on their identity or certain characteristics has. In service of some idea of balance and neutrality has no value or purpose in our public schools. And it only serves to discriminate against historically marginalized students. So additionally, I think school officials censoring peaceful expression solely because some students may have a hostile reaction to it. Has been proven in courts to violate the First Amendment. School actions can't target speech. Or have the effect of stifling or discouraging identity-affirming speech. In, in fear of what could happen, someone else's hostile reaction. Next slide. So some of, some of those do touch on the rights and dignity of LGBTQ plus students. But we have also seen. Even more particular targeting of LGBTQ plus students. And to be very clear, the law is, is well-settled here. There is what one court called an unbroken line of authority from the luminous federal cases. Holding that Title IX's non-discrimination mandate ensures that LGBTQ plus students have equitable access to education free from sex discrimination. And courts and the US Department of Education recognize that sex discrimination. Includes sexual orientation and gender identity and someone's transgender status. And the US Department of Education has materials. That describe the school's responsibility to ensure the policies clearly affirm students' right to be free from discrimination. Excuse me, based on sexual orientation or gender identity in all aspects of school programming and activities. Next slide. So these are some particular areas, I apologize for the small font, some particular areas that we've seen policies and. The law relating to them. So exclusion of transgender students from sports teams that are aligned with their gender identity. Constitutes discrimination on the basis of Title IX. And multiple courts have actually addressed this issue and held that excluding trans students from sports violates the law. There is actually, US Department of Education proposed regulations on this specific matter that are expected very soon. And additionally, the. Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, which prohibits sex discrimination. The commission has also explicitly recognized that discrimination based on gender identity and expression constitutes sex discrimination. And there was. One state court entered $500,000 damages award against a school district for violating the Human Relations Act when it failed to intervene and address. Bullying and harassment a student experienced from other students due to her gender presentation and not conforming to gender stereotypes. So similar claims like that would be made against a school that created policies for athletics exclusion based on gender identity and sex stereotypes. We have also seen policies proposed to prohibit. Or limit the use of preferred pronoun and name of trans and non-binary students. And the practice of misgendering permitting or promoting. The misgendering and dead naming of students also violates Title IX and the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act on that basis of sex and gender identity discrimination. And actually, multiple federal courts have already found that intentionally and persistently misgendering constitutes sex-based harassment and creates a hostile environment. There is additionally a right to privacy. Courts have recognized that sexual orientation and transgender status are intimately private. And have found that it's a violation of a person's right to privacy to disclose this information absent a legitimate interest. Pennsylvania educators additionally have a primary professional obligation to the students they serve and respecting a student's right to privacy. And schools have a compelling interest in protecting the physical and psychological well-being of minor students, as has been recognized by courts as well. The Third Circuit, which governs our area in Pennsylvania. Has recognized that transgender students face extraordinary social, psychological, and medical risks. And the school district at issue in this particular case had a compelling state interest in shielding them from discrimination. I think it's also worth. Identifying that. There is no requirement in FERPA, which is the federal law that gives parents a right to view student records. It does not contain anything that requires a school district to affirmatively notify a parent about a request for. Using a particular name or pronoun. And so I've seen some cases that addressing this, courts really look at whether there is an individualized determination that. That. Schools really look to whether a student, in particular, this specific student feels safe. And would be. Comfortable identifying their preferred name and pronoun to their family as well. And if not, then the school has to figure out a way to accommodate them. And it's really, it's really the, the targeted denial of. The same courtesy that educators every day afford to other students when they say. You know, yes, my name says James on the roll and I want you to call me Jim. Like that's, that is a common courtesy that every educator. Really, I think. Insists on in order to build rapport, in order to respect the students that are in front of them and build a, an inclusive learning environment. So to deny that same courtesy to transgender and non-binary students is in fact. Treating them differently based on their sex and gender identity, which as I've said, is a violation. We've also seen a direction to remove LGBTQ rainbow pride flags from classrooms. It is common for teachers and educators in different spaces of schools to. Display rainbow flags to allow students the comfort of knowing that this is a safe place, that they can be themselves here, they can be. Out and be affirmed, which is really important for this population that is at significantly higher risk for self-harm and suicide. And so a school district saying that all pride flags must be removed is really. A targeting of that population and. Not required, as we saw in one school's argument, if they were to allow. One kind of flag, they have to allow others. That's just not true. The First Amendment case law doesn't provide that way. And it is a choice that the district can make, but absolutely creates a hostile environment. When those students see the direction that. Material that supports them is, is directed to be removed. This is the conclusion of the material. This is the conclusion of the material that I prepared. And I apologize, I know I ran through everything very quickly in order to try to cover as much as possible with you all. But I need to flag that we do have this webpage and we can provide this by email as well to all, everyone who's registered. The materials on this page include fact sheets about these issues that I've flagged here, school board authority and book bans and LGBTQ students' rights, as well as advocacy letters that our organization has sent to particular school districts where these issues have been raised. And if you have inquiries or want to report concerns at your particular school district, we request that you use our helpline, phone and email address provided here. And then we would be able to contact you directly and get some more specifics about particular issues that have come up and, and provide whatever kind of support is appropriate in your particular circumstances.